Like to call the mean order, two pounds of wire in tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. It's not unpleasant.
Let it be the chief's behalf of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we want those all, slash, for those?
Yes.
Uh, approval of the agenda?
Too close, huh?
Where's the extra pen and pens?
Right over there on the chair.
Do you want to write the agenda?
We got one, we got one. Okay, uh, approval of the agenda?
I move to approve the July tenth, twenty twenty-four agenda.
Second is, all in favor? Uh, minutes of last meeting?
I approve to move, uh, I move to approve the minutes of July second, twenty twenty-four.
Second. All in favor? County Administrator Weekly Update?
Uh, just two items for you. First is to let you know that we did receive an application for Iron Tail, Iron Tales liquor license application renewal. Uh, scheduled that for July twenty-fourth at six P M. So we'll notify all the appropriate parties and he will be here before, uh, before you on that date. Also to let you know that the York County Soil and Water C R P self-evaluations from the Town Act have been completed and sent back. That's all I have.
Okay, ladies, update.
Sure. Um, well, there's been a lot going on with, uh, year-end process. Mark Royce been very busy, uh, providing us a whole series of reports, uh, uh, providing results on, on year-end, um, financials. Uh, we're still reviewing those with him, but, uh, things look encouraging. Uh, I think it's fair to say that we will have a surplus this year. I'm not gonna go any further than that because I think until, uh, Mark has done his work, uh, and we have the auditors, uh, some indication from the auditors about how this is going, I wouldn't wanna, uh, you know, uh, preliminarily state something and have to retract that. But, uh, we look in good shape. I think we have more cash than we planned. Uh, we didn't draw as much from reserves as we had hoped, so, uh, not had hoped, but planned to draw. And so I think the town is in good shape. So as that develops, we'll provide more information. Uh, I got a call from Jennifer. We needed to move some cash around, which we did, about five hundred thousand dollars to make sure we had enough cash to take us through maybe tax season, maybe not, we'll see. And, uh, so that was withdrawn, but, uh, things are going well and, um, I mean, Treasurer is working out very well. She's doing a great job. We're very pleased for her and, uh, and I thank you, Jennifer, for the work you've done and, you know, training her and bringing her along.
You're doing a good job.
Yeah, yeah, Lauren is, uh, yeah, thank you.
Okay, Dan?
I'm currently working to try to schedule a regular meeting with the fire chief. Um, Recreation Committee is still looking for members to serve in the committee. Um, so if anyone is interested, make sure to reach out to Jennifer so, um, we can schedule interviews and just kinda talk about what that entails. Um, and just the Conservation Force Committee is not meeting this month, but has, had them talk with the champ on just some various different things.
Ed?
Sure. Let's see, Animal Control, he's in place. He's had a, what, his first week or so and he's been relatively busy. Uh, so, yeah, so he's, he's worked out good. Mary Grant, either had a meeting or have one coming up, Bill?
Had one coming up.
Got one coming up.
We have that, Rob, Mick.
I think it's on thirteen.
Okay, so I'm gonna be at that. Uh, and then the transfer station, um, we just had a, we had incident up there Saturday that we are addressing and nothing critical, nothing crucial, just, uh, something we need to take care of and then, uh, pretty much all we need to really say about that, so.
John?
Yesterday, it was bad. I had a conflict with the school committee, had their first meeting. We had elected officers and set an agenda.
So you weren't there?
No, wasn't able to make it. Um, but I will be going to the monthly meetings, second Tuesday of the month.
Thursday.
That's it.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay. Well, uh, I met with the road committee last night. They elected their, their new board. Uh, it was a pretty good meeting, set some goals. Uh, we discussed, uh, Article forty-three. Uh, the Article forty-three is getting depleted on funds and, uh, uh, we have come, and cause we've mentioned it before, uh, on this board about possibly going a different route involving maybe some lake associations and some of that. So during that meeting, we discussed it. Uh, they felt, they thought that was a good idea, um, cause they believe it may help out more, more roads than it is now. And, uh, so what I've asked them to do is to have that as one of their projects, to bring in some lake associations, meet with them, see if they're interested in, in, in jumping in on board with us with us. And, uh, so I've asked them to meet at least once a month to do so, you know? Uh, I like to see this process continue on. Uh, and I told them I wasn't really myself, not speaking for the board, but I was not for putting any more money forward until I know this process is working, you know, being worked on. Uh, and then if, you know, possibly if we need some more money, if there's happens to be a special town meeting for some reason, we may be able, maybe I'll put some funds forward to make Article forty-three work until this comes to tuition. So, uh, did that. Uh, we discussed some other stuff, nothing too major, but, uh, I think they've got a road to go down, get it? So, uh, Municipal Grounds, uh, just, uh, just heard back from our, the demo guy up here who's hoping to be here Monday. Uh, I did also meet with, uh, I forget his name, the individual who's, uh, talking about doing the memorial earlier. And, uh, sounds like, uh, most of this project's gonna be volunteered from, from once of it. And, uh, the cost that he was actually talking about was, uh, paying for some materials that I told him that I would do it at. So, uh, I went over the whole project with him. Uh, it's, it's quite elaborate what he's gonna do. Uh, the company that he works for, uh, they do grant, they, they cut grant, they sell grant. Matter of fact, they're shipping grant to Washington D C right now for, uh, uh, some memorial they're doing down there. So they're donating a lot of the materials. So I told him there that I was pleased with what he wanted to do and I would like, we just gotta make sure that we, uh, get in touch with the church and use some agreement, uh, making sure that we're allowed to do what we're gonna do.
I'll make it plain again.
Okay, and, uh, I appreciate him coming up too. That was great.
What's this individual's name?
I'm sorry, I know you had a problem.
Mr. Dennis.
Mr. Dennis, cause he's really volunteering, uh, these, these, uh...
Him and his daughter.
Him and his daughter are really doing this work, uh, out of kindness of their heart for veterans.
They are.
So, uh, you know, we oughta keep that in mind, find a way of thanking them for their services.
Yep. So we're pretty excited. Well, they wanted to help the Lake Capital veterans and his daughter really wants to become a hardscaper someday, so he's showing this is gonna be a project where they're gonna do work together and do it up pretty good. I have no doubt that it is gonna be nice. So, uh, Municipal Grounds, I think I'll hold off on the rec field until we go down the general further. Uh, don't think I have anything else.
Did you want to update the board on the road assessment and we were looking at Sabego techs?
Yeah, so that was one of the things that came up last night on the, at the meeting. I'm glad you brought that up. So, uh, we were, we were going over the road assessment. Uh, they were discussing this and that and, uh, at one point we were talking about the email that was sent about, uh, the hydrologists.
G O, right.
G O, yeah.
I mixed up the Sabego techniques to find out what the next step was now that they did the road assessment. They met with you guys, met with the road committee, remember I didn't sit in on that meeting? So we need to figure out where it left off. And he replied that he actually left us, he, he owes us a contract for the next step, which was working on a five-year plan. They actually wanted to go out and drill holes on each of the roads to figure out the, um...
Yeah, establish gravel, this and that to them, so...
Very expensive project.
So after the discussion we had last night, uh, our road commissioner, which is not here today, uh, he, he said that he's got a five-year plan that he's working on right now. And he used the road assessment that we, we have provided him and seems to think that that is putting him down the white path. And so at this point, um, doesn't sound, I, I, I'm not, I'm not really looking forward to punching a bunch of holes all over, acting in the road. And I think that's something you do when you have a road you're gonna fix then you go to that process, you know? Uh, doing them all, I think is kinda premature.
So do we wanna tell Sabego that we're just gonna continue to review the road assessment for now and see what our local guys can do with it?
So, Mr. Langley seemed to think that, that his five-year plan that he's pulling out of our road assessment that we've given him, uh, he's, he's feels comfortable with it. Uh, so I'm not sure of proceeding any further at this point, whether or not it's a good idea or not. I don't know. That's why I asked.
I'd like to see what his plan is. I mean...
Well, that's it.
Yeah.
Uh, I did ask him to make sure that we get that plan like ASAP.
I had a resident for, uh, a copy of the plan that was done for Lebanon. And I think I sent it to everyone here. John, you may not have received it cause you probably weren't a board member at that time. And when I, um, have been talking about doing some kind of road assessment, this was, uh, quite frankly, everything that I hoped it would contain. I thought it was quite good.
Yep.
And it was another firm that did the work. Uh, I don't have any information on what it cost, but, um, I think we oughta take a look at that. And I, it, it's great that Will is, Mr. Langley is, is doing that work. Um, to me, five years doesn't do it.
No.
And I think you need a longer-term view of what your road maintenance needs are and what your funding needs are for that. And that's exactly what the Lebanon plan did. And so, um, I would encourage Will to continue, but I think we also need to look broader than that and maybe Sabego could do that. There was this other firm, I think I may have the link for the report. I think it's on the Lebanon website. It's posted. I thought it was excellent myself. And, uh, again, I don't know what it costs, but I think it would be worthwhile pursuing.
Well, at this point, Tom, I just, I, I, I'm thinking we hold off on Sabego until we figure out exactly what they would be giving us.
Yeah, they, and they all, they were gonna give you a scope, so without the signed scope, they're not gonna do anymore on it.
Cause I thought that was part, I thought you had brought that up too, Sabego. You asked them if they did anything like that.
I did, yeah.
And they said that they've done it, but they don't regularly do it.
That's what I read and which gave me a little pause.
So that...
This isn't, you know, necessarily part of their wheelhouse, but this other firm, uh, you know, I, I've seen these on facilities and, and they're really quite similar. It's, you know, uh, it's fixed asset, uh, renewal. So, um, I thought the Lebanon report was good, but, uh, I appreciate it by the members, especially those that know something about this stuff, could take a look at it and, and, you know, uh...
So why don't I make...
Help us figure out whether it makes sense for us.
I'll resend it. This has been, it's been some time since you, so I'll resend it to the full board. I'll make sure that Will has a copy and I'll see if I can dig into the company a little bit and we'll put it on next week's agenda.
I just, I just wanna hold off right now on Sabego.
No, yeah.
Well, that's, I'm gonna...
Go ahead. It is Lebanon.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So has Sabego given us some calls or?
No, no. Email is that, hi, Denver, I owe you a scope of services to prepare for a five-year road maintenance plan. For us to prepare this plan, we'll do the following, uh, list of items. And there's a half a dozen of things basically tied to maintenance and budgeting. Uh, we also will recommend engaging a geotechnical engineering consultant to conduct borings on the roads and it goes on from there. So, without that scope of work.
Appropriate or not, so, okay.
Hold off.
Hey, they got some experts right here.
So, they, other old business, can we just, I know you approved the agenda, but can we just get an official motion to, um, approve the contract as it was presented with Curtis? Just for the extension of dates, so we can make sure that starts on Monday?
Oh, let me make a motion to approve the contract with Curtis for the original amount at bid.
Do we need to name that? It's for the old fire?
For the old firehouse slash gym.
Okay.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Good idea, sign it before he takes it out, right?
I think so.
Uh, okay, new business, State of May G O T one oh nine highway project, all in up, guys.
All right. So I emailed you everything that they left, um, except for the map. I didn't have that, sure. So they have that, it's an app, and they've seen your proposal. So they wanna start with, with that. So you have to actually stand by the podium so that the camera can pick you up.
Okay.
So can maybe introduce yourself and start with this proposal there. I think that she was gonna...
Yeah, I'm Doug Gubman, I'm Senior Project Manager, uh, for the project. Uh, Sean Davis from T Y L N, they're the design consultant and design mark. And Lori Wal from our property office, uh, that is dealing with the negotiations. So we'll start with Lori.
So you're the negotiator?
Yes, I am. Yeah, so they've all seen that, but you're walking the board. I don't, I didn't have a booklet with me, so I just...
Okay, sure. They'll call back. Thank you very much.
Okay. No, no, I started off by going over the, um, the roadway plan, um, for your impacts on a property. Um, I'm not gonna do that tonight. Doug's going to do that because he can cover, um, more than just what I'll be doing and get your little feedback on the project overall. Um, I usually go with the roadway plan and also do the, um, the construction plans. Again, he's a much better person for that process. Um, so when I meet with landowners, that's the first. The next thing I do is I go over the booklet. The booklet is designed to help the landowners understand what it is that we, um, we're, we're attempting to do, what we've done so far and where we're going. Um, I didn't, I don't, I don't go over a whole bunch of this stuff, but, um, the project, there's a lengthy process to this project. It takes a long time. We're at the point here on the project where, um, we had an appraisal done. We've had, um, that been, that's been reviewed by our, um, senior project, um, appraiser and, um, also lead of property office, the director. They come up with an offer of what they think is, um, uh, just. And then, um, once that's done, it comes back to them with the negotiator. And the negotiator is the person that just comes out and meets with people and then goes over, you know, what it is that we've, um, found for, um, the needs and the design to, um, put the project together. Um, so we had surveyors out, um, both landowners at one point or another, and this project's been on the books for a while. Um, I've received, um, a survey, which is, it's called the Property Owners Report. Uh, we're, we're looking for things like, um, your source of your title, where your water supply is, what's underground, uh, sewage, uh, any other underground pipes or wires that are in utilities that are either under our load, in our driveway, or in the work area. Okay? Uh, so those are, that's something that I would want to know. And a lot of times people don't fill out the surveys instead of the back end. So, um, that's something. On your land, um, if there's something there, we'd like to know that it's there. The contractor is, it's best of his, not surprised by that. Um, your property boundaries and your boundary markers, that would be something that you would've, um, dealt with in the survey. Once, um...
Excuse me, can you speak up a little bit?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
We're afraid that people may not be able to hear you on the, out there and on the rest of the town. You're on TV right now, so...
Okay.
Don't make you nervous or anything.
I don't, we can normally get a lot of people. This guy's just... Um, okay, so when we impact a property, um, uh, we are taking some kind of easement. It can be temporary, it can be permanent, um, and it can be a take. It can be a fee interest. A hundred percent, we're taking over, um, the, the, that property. Um, in your case, in the town's case, we're not doing any of those. All of our work's gonna be in the right way. And I'm gonna have Doug talk to you about that. Other people in the project, other landowners, there's about fifty-seven. Um, there are some cases we're taking fee interest.
That, that is what now?
Fee interest means we have the total, uh, bundle sticks. It's the total ownership.
You're taking title to the...
Take title. That's a good way to put it. So, um, we are doing that in some cases. Um, because we're straightening up the road, we're gonna have to take some properties.
Excuse me, did I understand that in the town's case, you're not actually taking the property, you're working within an established right-of-way the state has through our properties?
Yes.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Correct.
Tough one.
In your case, we're doing some ditching and, um, under drains and curbing.
Curbin?
Yes.
Yes.
So, um, I'm just gonna go over the right-of-way part.
Yep.
Okay, so there's gonna be some drainage easements for individuals and also slope easements. And that's, uh, we want, we have drainage issues on the road, so we're gonna be ditching it. And, um, in some cases we have under drain and other cases we have, um, uh, under, under drain, that's really a, and some, I, I don't...
Open ditches as well in some areas.
Right.
Cross coves.
Yeah, cross coves and, um, catch bases.
This is pretty much a reconstruction project.
This is a blend of...
This is lipstick.
You got a real deal.
And I can, I'm more than happy to discuss any...
No, no, we're not gonna do that tonight.
They can go through us this summer really, but if you had specific questions, I probably would not be the best person to ask. Temporary rights, we're putting in, uh, if we're going by a property and we're changing either the, the elevation of the road, um, we're gonna do some work on your driveway. We're gonna match your driveway into that, okay? And usually if it's a gravel driveway, it's usually just, um, an acre. If it's not a gravel driveway, we're gonna pay to usually the right-of-way line, but it could be more than that. It all depends on the slope of the, um, of the driveway. Um, owner compensation goes back to the Fifth Amendment in our country. Um, if you, um, if we, if we take property, um, for, used for highway purposes, um, you have the right to have compensation, um, and you also have due process law. So, um, we have a way with the main to avoid going to court if it's, if we can avoid that. Personally, we'd like to deal with the landowner, um, but if necessary, uh, there's, your recourse is to go to state claims commission. And that's, uh, claim, uh, commission reported by the governor, the county attorney, the appraiser, county, county road people.
How's that working out with the landowners so far?
I haven't had any, um, you never know quite how things are gonna come, come through. And you can interpret what you think, but things don't always, you never know. I just, it's, um, tired.
Well, I was the road commissioner ten years. I understand when you go ditching in front of somebody's office, I don't work, so... But the reason why I was asking, I, I've had phone calls to myself.
Yeah.
You know?
And that's good for us to be here because we can sort of help with that. Um, okay, so, uh, anyways, owner compensation, this is eminent domain, so people don't have a choice. Uh, the design is set with potentially some things that haven't been picked up before. You double address those kinds of things. Um, and, um, I'm not used to doing it this way, so, I've never been on camera, so... Uh, so you do have a right to appeal. You don't have to accept what we, we offer you. And, um, and even if you do sign, um, if something came up, it, it just, you know, there was some catastrophe, you reset that and, um, come back and work with the state.
So you're not taking any of the Town Act that's from, you're correct.
No, no, no.
So what are we saying?
What we're taking is the existing easement highway. Right now, your road is split up into sections. Some of it's fee owned by us, some of it's an easement existing highway. It goes back into the seventeen hundreds, okay? Whoever the county commissioners are, am I right?
Yes, definitely.
It was, it was, it was defined and, uh, uh, now what we're having to do is to make improvements. And in some cases, that means we're taking some property.
So, do those easements allow for you to do improvements on that right-of-way easement?
They do.
Yes.
They do. So, so you have rights to do it already.
So the easiest way to think about this, right, is in the particular instance where the Town Act in it is the butter, there is an easement. It was an old county layover from a county commissioner from seventeen hundreds or eighteen hundreds. Because of that easement issue, the town couldn't build inside of it because you'd be violating the road easement. The easement says that within that easement, the state has the right to do anything they need to, to improve or, uh, maintain their existing roadway. But when you have patchwork such as one oh nine hack, in some cases, it's an easement highway. Some cases, it's a fee highway. So it's, it's essentially what can happen inside that easement or fee is the same, but the state doesn't like to leave that patchwork.
You want to hold it.
Right. So basically, the offer is taking, is to take what is currently an easement with right-of-way lines going on the plans and turn it into a fee highway.
That's different than what I understood.
I'm correct about that, right? Yeah. But it doesn't change anything. No, you could, you, they could, Lori, at the end of the day, they almost own it anyways to be, do whatever they want in that section of the road.
Well, there's not much you can do with a road once it's there. You know, I mean, what's a land gonna do?
I understand that. So, um, so this is...
So we are paying for that right.
Excuse me?
We're paying for that to have fee ownership. We're paying for that.
Yeah.
At one of, any month's property along us.
Anyplace where it's, where it's easement now, we're gonna be acquiring fee.
revert to a fee.
From, from the existing edge of the right-of-way line to...
Just taking ownership of what you're...
To what was ever held.
Taking ownership of what the state can already legally maintain. Yeah, exactly. So, so you're here to negotiate a settlement with us for a piece that you're gonna use anyways?
Um, if you, if, um, the town has, um, in a settlement, if the town has a lien, um, that person's name can also be on the, on the check. That was more interesting.
I think you would have found it, Andy.
If it don't harm the, um, the, the project at the time that we take, uh, the notes away of taking, then no person gets that. These are just things that happen in other people's...
It sounds like, uh, and I don't know where it was in the process, but you had done evaluation...
Yes.
Of what the, um, the transfer of that, of that title to that property to the state was worth, correct?
Yes, I...
And have you shared the detail of that with us?
Yes. Um, the appraisals themselves, we cannot share. It's statutory, um, in the state main. You cannot show the appraisals until after the project is done. The appraisals are done, so it may be determined the value of the project.
If this were a private transaction and then you were coming to me and you said, "We did an appraisal, it's worth a thousand dollars," I'd say, "I'd love to see it, just so that I can understand how you did it and what the assumptions were."
I can explain.
Huh?
I'm an appraiser. I can explain a bit of that. I am not the appraiser for that.
But you can't show us anything?
No.
Interesting.
Cannot. You can at the end of the project.
Yeah, but at that point it's...
I don't even wanna know. I'm gonna get screwed up.
If you want to have your own appraisal and go to...
My only interest is to make sure that the town gets good, reasonable value for this transfer. And so it, you've, you've assessed it at a thousand dollars. I, I'm sure you did a fine job, but as due diligence, personally, I would just like to know how you calculated that. And, and, and sort of confirm for myself that, okay, a thousand dollars makes sense.
For an existing easement highway, there's, um, uh, maybe Doug can address it differently, but it's just, uh, we, we're taking ownership. So we're just saying, okay, we're gonna give an arbitrary amount of money for that.
It's a standard off, basically.
A standard off, is it based on the size of the parcel? No, it's just a, is he of everybody a thousand dollars that you're doing this with?
Yes.
I mean, I, I, I like to negotiate.
And that really doesn't matter.
No, no, I, I'm just, I'm just saying, myself, I mean, a thousand dollars, I mean, it really is not a lot of money. Uh, but, you know, we're putting a new red field there and, you know, I mean, you gotta put a cove in, a little entrance for us, so that's all I want.
Well, you already have those and we're not...
No, we don't. We gotta put a cove. There's a little entrance, there's no cove, it's not...
There'll be a cove there when we...
So you're, you're gonna put one in anyways.
We, we'll rule with the design.
You cove that way. Just because there's no reason for two of us to do it. If we...
Well, let's see.
Don't feel a little bit of something happening, Scott.
But, that's, that, for me anyways, that's been very helpful. I don't know what it's been, but...
Uh, in terms of appraisals, okay, the way the appraisal does it, the eminent domain appraisals are different than real estate appraisals, state real. We're looking at, um, the larger parcels. So sometimes the larger parcel is less than what the acreage is, sometimes it's more. We're trying to give you the best dollar that we can, is really what it's about. We don't, I mean, we're all in this together, so, um, the appraise, if we had, we were doing a land take, okay, um, we're gonna come up with what we think is the highest and best value for that piece of land, right? And we're talking about an entire property, okay? So we're taking a piece of it and, uh, a land take, we're taking a piece of it and a drainage easement. We're gonna come up with what we think is the highest and best value for that piece of land, right? And we're talking about an entire property, okay? So we're taking a piece of it and, a land take, we're taking a piece of it and a drainage easement, a piece of it maybe and a slow easement. We're gonna have a temporary right to fix that right of way, okay? So on the, on the fees, the fee is, is gonna be exactly a proportion of the total value that we came up with for that property.
I see.
Okay? So obviously, something that's smaller is gonna have greater value than something that's larger.
But in our case, that's not applicable. It sounds like in our case, you're just, because you have rights to it anyways. So you're just paying for, you to get title to that land that you already have total rights.
Right. I thought you were asking a general question about-
Oh, maybe you was, but I wasn't.
So there's not a patchwork-
Right.
Of different types of ownership through there, either easement or a fee? So it's one fee all the way through? We don't like having a-
That makes more sense. What, what, how wide is that right of way gonna be?
That, in that area, it's thirty-three, so it's, so it's sixty-six.
Sixty-six, okay. So thirty-three from center of road, exactly.
So is that right of way expanding in any way into a further, to our property?
Not, not, not yours, no.
No, okay.
Oh, so you're not gonna take those pine trees and stuff down for us?
So, just, you know, I mean, we looked at it. We were actually curving the entire, pretty much the entire face of your, where you were bought. And we were putting closed drainage. There's a rock wall there, there's the trees. They were actually, I mean, we do, we didn't do it for just the town. We do it everywhere. We're really trying to limit our footprint. We don't wanna buy any more land than we need to. We don't wanna impact anymore. In some cases, we just can't do that. And we've gotta go get a slow easement from somebody or we've gotta get, you know, additional rights. But at the town, we, we looked at it, looked at the grave, we looked at the opposite side of the road, the reeds have a rock wall there, so we're actually gonna curve through that section.
That's one concern, one of the calls that I did get was from them there about their rock wall. Can you guys go work with them?
There is our right of way.
Yeah, we've met with them twice. Yeah, and, and so I can speak for the negotiation process. But, you know, we've had, this is typical of projects like these. We'll go along with landowners, we'll see, or, you know, there was preliminary outreach. Now we're at a point where the design's mostly cooked. We'll meet with some landowners and they'll say, "Well, yeah, we really don't like this. Can you do..." Sometimes the answer's no. Sometimes it's for highway purposes, I'm sorry.
Can you try to work with them?
Yeah, but we've worked with the reeds, we've got a couple of other others. We've modified our design slightly, we knew what we can. I can make everybody happy, I think I'd be on stage, but yeah.
We do wells. If there's a problem with a well, we're gonna, they just have to tell me and I will get a well trained person out there and test that well. And it can be tested again when the project's done. You're welcome.
No, I, we have no doubt that you guys, you guys are doing what you gotta do. Honestly, this was a project that was supposed to happen, what, six or seven years ago?
Yes.
I remember this whole wall, the whole wall was covered in the metal. And we're all excited and that's what happened, yeah. And nowadays, so I guess the question I, you guys, I haven't seen the, the actual plans of, but I know when I was real commissioner, I, Youngs Ridge Road, you're talking about doing an intersection rehab or whatever. And that's why I didn't pave it, because you guys are supposed, you guys are gonna do it this time, right?
Yes.
Okay. That's good for our government to know.
Yeah, the way out, squaring up.
Squaring it up. Now, we're gonna end it up, probably.
I, I'd have to look at that, but I believe so, yes.
So when you're considering these changes to the entrance and the, and the drainage, et cetera, are you working with our road commissioner or who are you working with?
For-
I mean, who?
Well, I mean-
Do they have to work with it?
No, they don't.
Okay, fine.
I mean, honestly, I'm sure you don't, you don't wanna have to deal with every single person. It's something that they really don't have a whole lot to say on, in first place, so. But on that, on that intersection, there was a drainage issue there.
Yeah, so Youngs Ridge Road is, I can show you a plan. Like, it is kinda getting more teed in, it's being shifted over. The drainage is being taken care of.
There is a catch base in that road, you know that, right?
Uh, yeah, we've got the plans, yeah.
Oh, you've got all the plans?
We've got the detailed plans, but we're not, again, I can show you the design here, but-
Because most people don't realize there's a catch base in that road because they paved over it.
Yeah, it's a, looks like it's a link there, and we got it.
Yes.
Yeah, there's also an existing, there's a weird existing pipe that kinda goes under Youngs and then turns, it goes underneath 109.
So there's two pipes that go across the road-
Yeah.
To a main, a, a, a structure.
Yeah.
And then it goes across your road.
Yeah.
So it's, it's on in?
Uh, yeah, there's one here and there's one, those two pipes aren't parallel to one another, right?
They become two?
Yeah.
That's why there's a sinkhole.
Yeah. And that, actually, where those two pipes kind of, kind of join, kind of, that's almost gonna be the new edge of pavement because we've got that whole lot to shift it over.
Nice. Perfect. I mean, honestly, this is a technicality from the looks of it. We'll take a thousand bucks, right?
Can I perform any designs?
Yeah, I was trying to get an elaborate, it's too, it sounds like we're already gonna hear it.
Yeah, we have questions for the negotiation piece, and I think they traveled subtly.
We can send her on our way if we have a motion.
So, my question with you guys, so you've been working with all these landowners and everything, right?
Anyone in contact, yes, yes.
Okay, so, good.
What it has in there is it just ties everything together. This is, this tells you we're somewhere on time. There's, this is the number that's on the map, this is the plan, here in parcel thirty-one. This is the right of way of taking, this is the way to report it.
Are you having given a clarify that you're taking title to property you currently have? The town owns, you currently have right of way through? You're taking title to something that's currently on right of way?
It always shows up in that document. Every single type of easement or payment is listed, the station is listed.
Yeah.
Every single person.
And, yeah, and so we'll take care of that when we are pitching the road, we're gonna do it.
This is, this is-
Well, I mean, the deadline is actually August fifth, based on- So-
Well- Excuse me? We've got a camera going, so we've got all-
This indicates that the deadline is August fifth. So, I mean, you, we can send it to our landowner's attorney, let him review it?
I, I would prefer doing that.
Would you say that's part of this?
Anytime you're excited over land, you can-
In this case, I would, yeah. Personally, I wouldn't, but for municipal, yeah.
So if you want to, you're welcome to.
So I, I think we're, we're, I think we're fine here. You guys have any questions?
No.
No?
I've already been through it.
We'll send it to our council once we get back. Hopefully, we can take a motion, sign the document.
Yeah, we'll send it to you.
And we'll be back.
It, it, it's just better that we do that, just to make sure our girl eyes are always focused. So, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Sorry.
If you do run into landowners that have questions or concerns, please let us know. You know, it was for me or for Doug, and we'll, we'll work on it.
Thank you.
Yep. I could guess, cards? Uh, yeah, anything on the designs you wanna go through or anything like that?
So appreciate it. That's definitely a piece of road that needs to be dug.
Related, I think it was Gold Posers that was in the- They're pretty much-
What's the name of the firm?
Gold Posers.
Does anyone know that?
Nope, we can look it up.
They do a lot of work in Maine. They're, they're competition to me, but they're-
You think that's a work once you reserve a project?
I think, look, so, I thought, I thought it was from a child, I live around them. And just the fact that your council is doing this, that's just, that's a fantastic thing to do. An honorable man, they just fly by the seat of, I think it's absolutely a great thing to do. My personal opinion as an engineer, don't go false to road, that's what you do. Maybe there are not, there are ways to do that. They can use F D M, they can use G P R, they can test pavement without evidence. It's a little more expensive, but you don't want much holes, you're really comfortable with it. And so they listen for, you know, but Gold Posers is still operating the state, so.
Awesome. Appreciate that, my pleasure.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Thanks a lot.
All right, so we met, what's a property owner, Keith and Mena Cornish. It appears that we were inadvertently taxing them on sixty feet of frontage. They only have fifty-three feet of frontage. Met with Dennis. It's a tax abatement valuation of forty-nine hundred, results in thirty-one dollars and sixty-one cents. But he's asking that we approve that.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve a, an abatement in the amount of thirty-one dollars and sixty-one cents for property held by Cornish, Keith and Mena Cornish.
Is that a, all a favor?
You have any others?
No.
Okay. Do we need to take this?
I'm sorry?
So do we need to take this?
If you don't offer one for an hour, it's- Yeah, right there. One problem.
Yeah, good. It's time. So it's gone by quick? It's gonna be December.
Oh, it's not easy now. We don't wanna talk about when he had-
No, I want to call him.
He said before, it ought to be December, it's like, easy now. Don't talk like that. Uh, yeah, I know if you do, but it's months, it ain't long.
Okay.
Okay. Comcast franchise agreement.
So your attorney, Brian Moore, has reviewed in conjunction with Chaplin, because it's the same contract, so we're splitting all the legal fees, remember Comcast came before you. To think about offering services here, it has to be written a particular way so that it falls off the other franchise agreements that we have. He's made a variety of changes. Comcast hasn't seen this yet. They've sent it over to you guys and have you reviewed it. Just looking for your permission to have him basically handle it from here, negotiate, and do a final draft.
Yep. Has, has Chaplin offered any changes?
Um, I don't know. Okay.
So we're basically gonna ask for actually negotiating on our behalf?
Yep.
Should we have a, a selection joint?
I mean, I don't think that, I think that if, he's gonna just send these over to them.
Okay.
And it'll be all via email and there'll certainly be, we'll-
So he'll, he'll avoid making-
Yeah, he's not, we're not gonna need Comcast per se.
You all agree with that?
I'm probably with that.
Great. Blueberry Hill contract.
So the contract actually expires today. We do have a little wiggle room. We've, I've been communicating with the property owners for the last month or so, I think Ed and I, and David, I think we've kind of gone through it. They are looking for a hundred dollar increase per month, so from four hundred to five hundred. Brad has reviewed it, he made some minor changes. One of the other changes that's in here, which you may not be aware of yet, is section three, to bear in mind, paragraph three. So there is, as you may be, as you're aware, there is some concern from our insurance company that the area that we're leasing has inadvertently gathered with some metal and some other junk. We've asked the property owner to clean it up. There's a clause in here that indicates that if she doesn't clean it up, that we're able to have it cleaned up at her expense. She has asked for a provision of ninety days to be put in there, sixty to ninety days, so.
So give her sixty to ninety days?
We'll give her sixty days. So the contract is gonna read that, you know, sixty days from the date of the contract, the leasing will have the right to clean it up as a less orders expense. So we're gonna give her sixty days to finish cleaning it up.
How, how will we be paid reimbursed for that? Will we take that as a future payment or how does that work?
I mean, it's, it's not specified in the contract, so I guess that would be a legal question as to whether or not we can do that or if we'd have to go, go after them similarly.
Is that five hundred a month?
A month.
Versus, okay. I, I just wanna make sure that if we're gonna do the work, personally, I would, I would hold back monthly payments if she doesn't otherwise make a payment.
Right.
I don't know what it would cost to clean that up.
She's adamant that, I mean, they don't wanna lose that money.
Yeah, well, I mean, honestly, at the end of the day, I think our recourse would be not continuing paying the payment until we're-
Well, we need a legal right to do that. We need something in there.
Let me, let me go back one second. So if we can make a motion to approve it with that stipulation, I'll bring something back, but at least it'll be on record for July tenth to be included. So we'll, we'll have Brad add a stipulation that if it comes to that and the town has to clean it up, that any repayment would be through the deduction of-
Future lease payments.
That's good idea.
Okay?
So you want a motion now?
Yes, to, to approve it with that amendment.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the amended, or the lease agreement as, as drafted and presented with an amendment to, to allow for reimbursement to the account of any costs that occurs in, in the cleaning up of the site to be taken from future lease payments.
Okay.
Second?
Yep, perfect.
All a favor?
And I'm not trying to, for the public, this is only a five year lease, it's not a ten year.
I had Taylor's request.
So, dear Slutford, this letter is to inform and request permission to add an additional outdoor concerts to my summer season. The shows will end promptly at ten P M. and stay within the parameters set by the noise ordinance in town. I can appear before you if necessary for any questions. Two additional dates are July twentieth and August ninth. This is not a request for mass gathering because I expect far less attendees than I am permitted by state or local code. I appreciate your attention to this.
Isn't July twentieth the Renaissance Fair, too?
No.
It's the twenty, twenty-first.
He's having an outdoor concert that'll end by ten.
I don't feel really bad about it.
Not really?
Well, it was concerning, Brad, for the Renaissance Fair, that was gonna be, so I just wanted to-
And the Renaissance Fair, I have to think it'll be well done by then? Do they go?
Yeah, I don't think they go that way. I think they knock off around five.
Five, literally? In any event, I don't think that we, I mean, it's-
I'd be sure we're really getting by if you're expecting under, under the-
Well, that was one of the concerns that we brought up, one thing, I want to make sure we're giving equal consideration in those situations.
He just thinks that there's probably not gonna be a very big event.
Well, he's saying if it's not a mass gathering, I mean, I guess I'm kind of, unless there's some, he says clearly, this is not a request for mass gathering. The shows will end by ten, so I guess I'd have to go to the planning board, see why he's even making a request. You know, I can look at his conditions, I mean, no offense to the board, but why is he even asking you? If it's not a gathering-
Probably just asking under courtesy.
And it's not, you know, he's saying it's not gonna go past the noise ordinance, it's gonna be done by ten.
I think we ought to just thank him for telling us.
Yeah. So I guess I'm not sure what you're approving.
I don't think we're approving anything. I think it's already part of his-
Well, he's saying he likes to inform and request permission.
Did you say that? Did you say that date that you already came in and asked for?
The twentieth was?
Yeah.
But he asked for mass gathering. He applied for a mass gathering permit for a couple of those events. He paid the fee, the insurance, we handled that, he said it.
This is, this is my question.
So, did you say this is for liquor license?
No, that was a hell of a.
I already had one. His liquor, he, his liquor.
Okay.
That, that was a different one.
I'd say we just thank him.
Yeah.
I mean, unless it's a condition that I'm.
Reassuring us on the time and also on the noise.
Okay.
I think that's, uh, that's great that he's making those efforts because there have been concerns about that in the past. And I think that shows good.
I think he's being proactive.
Yeah, I agree. Good man.
Maybe it has something to do with the outside, if I remember, but I'll never get it. So, any, no concerns, anything to share?
None.
Why haven't we got a public comment before?
I, I, we can't. Uh, there's not gonna be an action out of executive.
I don't know.
No.
We'll open a public comment anyways. Any public comment?
What can you do about the weather?
The weather?
We started reading all over the, this is.
I really got it, come on.
Been hot.
Well, I did, I was gonna ask about the gym, because I already answered that. But, um, Tom, I was a little, I, I'm addressing you, interested in that, um, Lebanon thing. Did that include, like, capital improvements?
No, it was roads. It was roads. It, it was a capital improvement plan.
It was.
Uh, for roads. And, uh, it, it took an assessment of current condition, um, the kind of maintenance that should be done on the roads, given their condition, uh, the timeframes over a long, I think it was a twenty year period. It allowed you to develop a long-term capital budget to meet the long-term renewal.
Renewal.
Renewal of the roads.
Yeah. Well, the other thing is, when you were speaking of, um, you know, we have Sevosa and then looking into something else, I mean, right now, I've been going through spending, you know, for another couple, having my log cabin redone, top to bottom on the outside. You don't go with one person, you.
Yeah, you look around.
You look around, so.
We wanna be sure that we can get the actual company to get what we want done.
Exactly. So, so, you know, I might encouragingly say to look into, you know, this other piece of information that you have. It's a good idea. I think it's a very good idea. And David, you said something, which I didn't quite hear, sorry.
Of course you did.
You didn't do anything.
I didn't hear a lot of it, I'll tell you. But, um, yeah. On the cleanup of the municipal, uh, areas.
Oh, municipal, over here.
Oh, right here, yeah. Um, I know you're working with, uh, probably Mr. Peavy or whoever it is, the church people over there to do your thing. But, um, are you also looking for volunteers, one way or another?
Not, not at this point, maybe in the future, but, uh, right now, this is a project with him and his daughter. They're gonna come in, they're gonna lay a grant, they're gonna do this and that. Um, we don't wanna get too many people in the way or anything like that right now. And, uh, so, uh, not at this point, maybe at some point. And if so, I'll, I'll let everybody know. Cause I might kinda work with him. And, uh, but I think right now, this is something that he really wants to do with his daughter.
Right. Okay. Thanks very.
But if you're a volunteer, I'll keep you in mind.
Well, I actually have a degree in landscape design.
I know.
But how, how are you with a show?
Well, no, well, not bad. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, uh, Joe, got anything? Okay, I guess we have no more public comment. Uh, do I hear a motion?
I move that we go into executive session tomorrow at six, four oh five, six eight, personal now at six fifty-five P M.
Second.
All in favor?
No, they're way over, they're over their heads.
They're over their heads?
Way over their heads. That's what they gotta do, you know, um, I haven't read, and I think the Lebanon one is online.
Lebanon was more down to earth. And as far as spending money, Bill Ford's, it's very expensive.
Have you read?
And the money we spend doing that, we could, we could rebuild the road.
I don't, I don't think we need to spend twenty-five, thirty-five, forty thousand dollars on getting a plan to fix it up.
You know, yeah, what the road is, there's never a problem to build, but there again, look at even today, they don't have the money to. How much money do they spend on a scrap of a road?
More than, quite a bit.
Half a million dollars.
Oh, at least.
Yeah.
At least.
I'm not talking about the color, I'm talking about.
Oh, I, I'm not talking about the color either.
What I'm saying is, my contention is that these people are nice people. They're selecting the nice people. They don't spend enough time reviewing what has to be done. And then they make decisions and it costs us money, like the wire station. Shanty, I don't know if you know, it's during, I'm in Shanty. But there's always these little errors that are made by one or two. They perpetuate the problem, make this problem, whatever. These roads in terms of horrendous shit, that Mr., uh, Charlie and I spent, uh, four or five hours driving around, he didn't even know which, which roads they were gonna take.
Yeah.
Who were gonna take, um, Tom, the dirty ones. Cause he says, I don't know, we're gonna give them an education.
Right.
On the south side, it was neglected for the longest time. And then Mr. Doliver took it, or I think he became overwhelmed. And they got, but, yeah, man, I don't know. Yeah, it's like an hell of a mess. So where do you, where do you go? I promise, if it was surplus money, you put into the roads. You lose inflation eight, twelve percent, you're getting five percent in money, or you do, you know, and it's really white. And then the thing is, Mr. Roy, is he, is he in town employee or is he just a consultant?
He's a consultant.
Yeah.
So that makes him unemployed, uh, he's employed by the town.
Who is the treasurer?
Lauren.
She was the lady that was taking.
She was the lady in the back office. Not in the back office. You know, she sat in the back corner of the big office. No, no. She's probably fortyish.
So the lady that registered my car, I don't know what her name was, she left?
I don't know. Which who registered your car?
I don't know.
Blonde or dark hair?
I think she had dark hair.
Probably Lauren, though.
Okay, so she was doing that and then she went to be treasurer, okay?
Yes.
So would you say that Mr. Roy, uh, has taken the, the coming system of acting and kinda put it in order?
Yes.
And made it so.
I would say that's.
When a bill comes in, Lauren knows exactly which will.
Where it goes, how it goes.
And something else.
Right, right.
So it's just a matter of being dysfunctional for a number of years. If acting is, and was or has, is or was in that situation, where are these other small towns? Are they in the, would they end in the same situation?
Well, what happened in Lebanon, when they closed down? In fact, wasn't it Dick Neal's daughter who went over there and straightened out a lot of theirs? When they had to shut down their offices, Dick Neal's daughter became the accountant over there who straightened out their books. I mean, I remember that from when I was here. Now, everybody used to come here to register their cars and all that because the whole town just said, no more. They shut down their budget, they did everything, they shut it down. They were in terrible shape. Very, very bad shape.
So we're doing essentially an upgrade of, on the financial.
Yes.
Accounting and whatever it is. It's why the.
How many?
Lot, lots are in line at time wise.
Time wise, yeah. How many years was it Lorraine Getton doing it all?
I don't know. Was she doing, that she was in the treasurer?
She was doing almost everything. Just about everything.
I don't know, cause it was Rainer Andrews and then there was the lady up here that died, driving on her, getting the.
Oh, yeah. And there was the one that.
And then there was here, there, and there was different people.
Right. But still, I mean, I've got annual reports that we can look at and we can see who the treasurers were. Cause I got annual reports back to nineteen hundred.
So in other words, they're grooming new candidates for position that may not have the credentials.
That's, if you can get them. Now, a treasurer in a town like this, I love my own at home. A treasurer in a town like this ought to think she could be able to make, he or she could make maybe fifty, fifty-five, sixty thousand a year. Okay, that's what they ought to be making, which is not enough money for a family. So.
Isn't that, isn't that unfortunate?
Isn't that unfortunate?
It, it's all something, something's gonna happen.
Um, yeah.
I mean, this, this can't go on. I mean, there's, you know, like earlier, they want more pay raises. We're taxpayers also, too.
Yeah.
We have to bear the.
We're bearing the burden of milk being, you know, five bucks or four bucks a cereal being five dollars. You know, I can remember a lot of times, we'd have cereal for dinner, you know? Cause my dad was an engineer, but the company used to go on strike and the engineers wouldn't cross the strike line. So they wouldn't get paid. And since they weren't members of the union, they got nothing. My dad used to have a friend who owned the Amenee store. And his friend used to give him, like, on Friday nights. Remember when stores used to reopen on Friday nights, right? He'd have my dad come in and help him out on Friday nights. And that's where, you know, we get the money we needed because there was no pay track.
And it's amazing that years ago, how a little bit of money went so far.
Oh, gosh, yeah.
And this inflation thing is like, uh, I, I don't know, I don't know, like, this.
It's starting to catch up. It's starting.
I mean, I got a guy that wants to help me, he's willing for it, I don't know how experienced, he wants twenty dollars an hour. I said, you know, I have to justify, I have to bring, whatever, I have to have a whole bunch of trees that are down that I can pull down with a machine, but I still have to handle and bring. I mean, it's manual labor.
Yeah.
So I have to justify that in the morning, four hour morning, I've got a hundred bucks, you know? And sort of like, is that worth it? And then, and like, what did he know?
Well, look, we're, like I said, we're having our whole host page on the outside. But that means it's gonna be, like, pressure washed, but they can't pressure wash a log cabin. They have to clean it, okay?
What do they do when it falls in the ground?
Hmm?
What do they do when it's scraping on? Where does that go?
It goes on the ground. But, I mean.
Yeah, but eventually it's gonna go in the lake.
No, it's not going in the lake because they, they, they have to, no, no. They have to put tarps down.
Okay.
Okay? So first they, they spray it down. Then they have to go in by hand in some places and scrape it down by hand.
Because it's a log cabin, so it's sheer or pine?
Uh, pine. But that's even worse because it's pine. Then they're going to do some chinking, line by line by line.
Chicking mean filling in the air holes, right?
Yes, filling in the air holes. Then they're gonna put in, um, it's called permit chink, but that's just the name of the company. It's a translucent stain that has a little bit of color in it, but not, it's not like putting paint on. And so it would be all one brown. It lets the wood show through. And once that gets put on, and you can just spray it on, but then you have to go over it and it has to be brushed out by hand. So we got one estimate for fifteen thousand eight hundred.
Is that a local person?
Yep, all local people. We got a second estimate for eighteen thousand dollars. And the third one was twenty-one thousand dollars. Now, do we wanna spend twenty-one thousand dollars at our age on that house?
Well, why are you doing?
We have to keep it. We have to maintain.
Man, so it's a maintenance.
It's a maintenance.
In other words, if it had clapboard on it, you'd have to scrape it and paint it?
Yeah. If it had aluminum.
When was the last time you did that?
Ten years ago. Now, we've been there twenty-six years.
Since.
And we've done it almost every ten years. And, but you have to maintain it.
Did you know that when you purchased it?
We knew shit about, sorry, didn't mean to swear. We did not know about maintenance on a log home. But on the other hand, the house we left had cedar jingles. We used to do that every seven years. Now, that house was one-third the size of this house, you know?
What did your decision was?
Uh, we used, you used to clean them if there was any mold or moss or anything. Scrape them down. You, also, you had them powder washed.
Oh, really?
Yeah, oh, yeah. And then ours was, uh, kind of a, they called it a kind of a blue. It was like a Cape Cod kind of, you know, it wasn't the gray, that just, you know, it doesn't turn. It didn't turn. It was, when it was built, it was painted kind of a bluish color. And, uh, you know, but it was, uh, you know, you have to do maintenance, but we would never go with just one company, you know? Never do that. You know, you've always gotta find more people to.
You know what, uh, Bette, you know what he was talking about, the situation up at the town?
Oh, what happened?
They packed up, they didn't come and pick the.
Sorry?
They didn't come and pick the, the, the can?
Oh, they did.
Oh, it's backed up by, in fact, I said, they bought it. I said, I got garbage in here and I got a, a quarter of a gallon of, uh, milk that was sour. I said, I can take it back and I'll hold it till Monday. She says, no, just leave it, you know, my love, it's different. I hit, first of all, I didn't know if some animal had come and ripped it apart, that as well as everything else, you know, was on the table. And he was getting ready to close. And, uh, they since cleaned it up, but I don't know what the situation is, whether they know.
Was that about four o'clock on Saturday? Or Sunday? Cause that was your about four o'clock on Saturday?
I, but the heat, I, I have a hard time.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I'm getting some heat. Um, I don't know, it's either Saturday, Sunday, I think it's Saturday.
Yeah, that was your about four o'clock on Saturday.
And it was backed up?
And he said, my good, he was the last car in the line that was that backed up. You know, it was that backed up. But, you know, we got every.
No, it wasn't, this was not the cars, this is the trash.
No, no, well, the cars were backed up.
Trash is out of the dumpster and all that falling into the, the Rogers field. You know, it's like, uh. See, what they should have done is carefully, it's just like Gary Rideout came up and he's, I don't know, why don't we just put some, uh, barriers, the end cement barriers right in the middle? So you come in, all right, you wanna go to this, this metal thing, do the metal thing, go to recycling, make a loop, you know, back down, throw your trash. Come up on the right side, you're legally supposed to be driving a car. So there's no incidents, people are happy with it. The time, the time that you had Linley up there, I had Linley, he came up there, very initially did something, I think he pushed the brush around. He could have stumped that lamp. Back in the day, according to David Watson, back in the day, we used to do things, piecemeal, we'd take it, they would stump there, build a ramp, oh, yeah, okay, we'll get some gravel. We don't need an engineer here, this, this.
The things haven't been done for a long time. That's what happens when things aren't done for a long time.
Not for a long time, the people don't know what they're doing, that's all. I mean, you know, everything would get you going, do whatever, you know? I, I don't know.
Yeah.
The whole town's home now.
But, but whole, around whole countries.
Oh, I don't, I don't know what's gonna happen, but, uh, that's, that's like, they don't know.
Oh, no.
Is that your truck that tries it?
Uh, it looks like it, I don't know whose it is.
Oh, that's not yours?
Hmm?
That's not yours?
No, oh, God, no. No, no. I'm driving the, uh.
The, like, your roof car?
No, I've got my husband's car right now.
So when are they gonna, when are they gonna do the paint job?
I think it must start by the end of the week. Cause we just decided who we wanted, so we'll let him know and he's ready to start right away. So fine with me, fine with me. But you can't get easy.
Yeah, all right, cool.
Oh, absolutely.
How the fuck get through this, but is he gonna sign on?
Not though, not though. You know, it's, it's awful.
I drove with an air conditioning car today.
Yeah.
And I thought it was, people took, I said, the car was really hot. So then I turned, 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 it was almost hot, the air keeps circulating. Why don't we open up the windows, get the hot air up?
And put the air conditioner on.
Oh, that's too bad, yeah.
Yeah, check it easy.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay.
Well, sometimes we got acquisitions and stuff, you think the.
Last one?
People have gone through and speaking like the certain stuff, so I learned in a, trust the top newspaper.
They love us.
If you really do want to say something, you're gonna miss the best part of the night.
Well, that's why I do a pop.
Tom's, Tom's favorite artist. I'm sorry? Joe's gonna miss the best part of the night, and I said, Tom's favorite artist. Oh, for Jerry? Yeah.
Death on must've left.
Oh, see? Oh, really?
Yeah, she's probably.
No, she's in the office.
Yeah, we know.
No, yeah, no.
We're just being.
Hi, ready?
No.
Oh, wait for that.
Ready? We could go to Jerry's people, right? Let's go to Jerry's.
We probably could, you wanna do that?
Sure.
We have a motion to adjourn, uh, motion to come out of executive session?
Uh, I need that we come out of executive session, M R S A, four oh five six eight personnel issue at seven seventeen P M.
Second.
All in favor? Heads in the round room, so if you remove this show on.
Uh, motion to adjourn, second.
First of all, there's no, there's no decisions.
No, no decisions.
No decisions there? Uh, whoop, Ed.
Sorry, wait for you to adjourn, second.
We already have a motion come out of executive session, so. Uh, okay, so, no decisions are being made, uh, do I hear a motion?
Motion to adjourn, second.
All in favor? Goodnight, everybody.